We'd like to call the Jefferson Elementary School Board, Board of Trustees meeting of the 28th to order at this time at 7:03. So, could we call the roll, please?
Shaquille Ali.
Here.
Manufo Liainga Anawai.
Here.
Clayton Koo.
Here.
Rebecca Douglas.
Here.
Marie Brizuela.
Here.
So, let's go on to our Pledge of Allegiance and Bernie, you're the leader of the pack.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so at the beginning of our meeting, we will be reviewing our governing board guidelines, meeting guidelines?
Oh, we have it up there.
Yay. Okay. So, how are we doing? Okay. Is everything okay? We can move on? Okay, let's move on. Approval of agenda. Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And communications, board member acknowledgements and commendations?
You want me to go first?
Sure.
All right. I wasn't here at the last meeting, so I'd just like to commend all the graduates from all of our middle schools and commend the principals, staff, and teachers that organize and put on the graduations. And I just wanted to just mention to my colleagues here that the people in the audience actually do listen to what we're saying during those speeches because a few teachers and parents came to me after and, you know, brought up highlights of our different talks. So, I really appreciate us having that chance to go and hand out the diplomas but also to speak at the graduations.
I like Board Trustee Ali would also like to extend my congratulatory remarks to the graduation ceremonies that I was unable to attend. That's always been a highlight for me and one of my favorite responsibilities as a Board Trustee. It's always exciting to see our kids excel and progress to the next level. I also wanted, on behalf of my family, the Lafiti family, extend our sincere appreciation. It was very heartfelt to be able to share that the day of Mike's passing, that the Board was able to close the meeting in his memory and in his honor. And that also has been forwarded to his wife, Danielle, and just want to say thank you. On behalf of most of my aunts and families have sent messages to me to ensure that I conveyed their gratitude, so want to say thank you. Thank you very much.
For me, I just wanted to commend the Big Lift Inspiring Summers Program in our district. I haven't been able to see it in person, but I've been following it on Facebook and I've been seeing all the different photos that have been posted so far. So, I just want to thank the Big Lift and everybody in helping to plan that summer program this summer.
I have nothing to say. Our means are getting very close together. Okay, so for myself, just want to also congratulate everybody as well and I have to agree with the rest of my colleagues that graduations are the awesome thing to go to. And this year, we had four instead of three, which was great. And to see how adult and well-together our students are makes me very proud to be in this district and to know that Bernie, at the leadership, and everybody else under him, they're working very hard to make sure that our children are the best they can be. It shows when we go out there and see them. So, other than that, I'm going to take a moment to ask that we close the meeting this evening in honor of another individual from Broadmoor. His name is Jay Wayne Johnson, and for more than 50 years, he's been involved in our community as well as promoting and supporting the Broadmoor Police Department, Broadmoor Police Commission that he was on for many years, Broadmoor Property Owners Association as well, and also supported Coma Police Department. He was the chief for several years and also the Coma Fire District. He always supported our school, our school measures, and he was always there helping in whatever way he can as well as our community. Passed away recently and he's going to be very much missed and lost. So, in case anybody wants to see this. Anyway, and there will be a memorial, but it's actually a celebration of life at the Broadmoor Community Center on Saturday, the 15th of July, 2:00 p.m. Anybody is welcome to it. 10:00, there'll be lots of good food and good folks there to sit there and share good stories with, so if you're able to go, it'd be really nice. Okay, so now, we're going to turn it over to our superintendent.
No big comments except to say that we are now moved into our temporary facilities and we're open for business, personnel, HR, business, and my office. We have unboxed most of our stuff and at least we can find our pens. Yeah, so please come by and visit, board members as well as members of the public. If you have business and you see the front doors locked, please come around to the back.
I'm going to add that I did drop in to see it because I had to meet with Bernie and it's great. I was expecting a little box, but it's really nice. It's set up beautifully, so.
It's set up a little fine.
Yeah, but I mean, no, but I was not.
Unappropriate.
You guys have it fixed really nice. And it's, I can see you're busy, so. Okay, so our administrator comments now?
We started our summer programs last week and, you know, everybody's been working really hard to get those things going, so I just want to recognize all the folks and the hard work that that takes behind the scenes and now on the stage of the schools that it's going. And also our hard-working custodial staff and maintenance staff that really work together to get things done in a very short period of time. Bernie and I took some walks through the classrooms and the work they're doing together is very good. We really appreciate all their work and collaboration with that.
Can I ask some questions? What time is the, are the summer programs? Like, is it 8:00 to 12:00 or?
Closer to 8:45 to 4:00 for the Big Lift programs and around 12:00 for our special education program.
All right, thanks.
If you'd like to visit, please let me know and I can schedule something or help you schedule something or please call Ms. Kovarai because I will be gone for the next week, so she can help schedule you.
All right, thank you.
I have to say, they go till the end of July, last week in July?
Yeah, our special education program is complete on the 14th and the math program's complete on the 19th and our Big Lift program's complete on the 26th.
Following that, I would like to say that because we are serving food with the summer school program, that it is open to any individual who's 18 years or younger. And at the Big Lift, it is open to parents and adults as well, so because that's being served by the library. So, if anybody wants, they can join them.
Okay, so I think we're done with our administrators now? We'll move on. We have item D is persons wishing to address the Board. And this portion of the agenda is available to individuals to comment on or address the Board on any issue that is under the Board's jurisdiction and not on the agenda. The maximum time allowed for any speaker is usually two minutes. I have only one card this evening and it's Charles Sanchez, Research Analyst for Unite Here Local Two.
Greeting board members and staff. My name is Charles and I work for Unite Here Local Two, the Hotel Workers Union. I actually met some of you all last year on Supervisor Jane Kim's state senate campaign. I wanted to inform you all about a campaign happening in San Antonio County. A month ago, workers at the Pullman San Francisco Bay Hotel asked CBRE, an $86 billion investment firm, and the hotel owners for a fair process to decide whether or not to unionize without fear of retaliation. Since then, we've phoned, emailed, and even visited CBRE's office in person, but they haven't responded. These workers are voters, they're parents, they're community members, and they live all throughout the Bay Area. And their inability to exercise their rights as workers is only compounded by the Bay Area's housing and affordability crisis. There are workers at this hotel who commute a long way to work or work several jobs to make ends meet. Many workers don't seek medical care when they are experiencing mild to severe illness simply because they can't afford the copay or treatment costs. And there are workers who have nothing put away for their future because every dollar they earn is needed for the necessities. This is time, attention, resources, and care that is taken away from the children and loved ones of these workers, which impacts their growth, development, and health. Employees of most major hotels have been able to organize without the fear of being punished through a simple process called a card-check neutrality agreement. In fact, the company that manages this hotel has given employees the same protection in other cities. In the absence of such an agreement, the hotel is open to the risk of a public labor dispute. And furthermore, our teachers' retirement funds are invested in this hotel, CalSTRS money is invested in this hotel, and we should not be seeing these funds used to contribute to the Bay Area's affordability crisis. So, we hope to have the opportunity to meet with you all individually and discuss the campaign further and identify ways you can support the campaign. Thank you. Also, I'd like to, we have another speaker. He's one of the workers of the hotel.
So, is this, looks like, is it Miranda?
Francisco?
Francisco Miranda.
Oh, the other way around, so sorry.
It's all right. So, I'm going to say something in Spanish. I'm sorry. So, mi nombre es Francisco Miranda. Tengo nueve años estar en este país. Estoy asistiendo a la Jefferson High School por dos años.
My name is Francisco Miranda. I've been in the United States for nine years and I attended Jefferson High School.
He trabajado en el hotel Pullman San Francisco Bay por más de dos años en el departamento de housekeeping.
I've worked at the Pullman San Francisco Bay Hotel for more than two years in the housekeeping department.
Me encanta atender a nuestro cliente y recibirlo en Pullman Hotel, pero es cada vez más difícil hacer alcanzar el dinero.
I enjoy attending to, taking care of our guests and receiving them at the Pullman Hotel, but as it continues, you know, it's more and more difficult for, to make ends meet.
Soy originalmente de Nicaragua. Vine a este país cuando tenía 16 años a buscar una mejor vida y cuando llegué a asistir a la Jefferson High School.
I'm originally from Nicaragua. I came to this country when I was 16 to search for a better life, and that's when I started attending Jefferson High School.
Y cuando asistí a la escuela, me ayudó a tener un mejor futuro, pero hoy necesito su apoyo para seguir adelante en mi lugar de trabajo.
Attending high school here helped me obtain a better future, but now I need your help to continue moving forward in my workplace.
Aún como una persona soltera, casi todo de mi cheque va a pagar a la renta.
Even as a single person, almost all of my paycheck goes to pay the rent in Daly City.
Vivo con cinco personas, otras personas en un apartamento de dos recámaras.
I live with five other people in a two-bedroom apartment.
Vivo con mi hermana, mi cuñado, mi mamá, y yo.
I live with my sister, my brother-in-law, and my mom.
Y no podemos pagar la renta.
All of whom have full-time jobs and we can't pay their rent.
Le estamos pidiendo a CBRE que nos permita un acuerdo de organización para que podamos decidir si queremos unión.
So, we're asking CBRE to let us have an organizing agreement so that we can decide for ourselves whether we want the union.
Sin tener que preocuparnos por las represalias o la presión de las gerencias.
Without having to worry about reprisals or pressure from management.
Miles de trabajadores hoteleros en el área de la bahía han podido organizarse de esa forma.
Thousands of hotel workers in the Bay Area have been able to organize through this process.
Hasta la compañía que metió CBRE para administrar a este hotel.
Even the management company that CBRE has hired to manage this hotel.
Ha permitido que los trabajadores se organicen por medio de ese tipo de acuerdo en otros lugares.
Has allowed their employees to organize through this type of agreement in other hotels.
Queremos que CBRE le diga a sus gerentes que hagan eso aquí en el hotel Pullman. Nosotros somos dignos de esa forma de respeto.
We want CBRE to tell their managers to do the same thing at the Pullman Hotel because we deserve this type of respect.
Espero que ustedes nos acompañen a pedirle a CBRE que haga lo justo para los trabajadores en su hotel.
We hope that you all support us in asking CBRE to do the right thing for the workers at their hotel. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any? Is that under our jurisdiction? Is that under our jurisdiction? Not quite sure how it is. I just wanted to let you know that we all were given some papers, but there was something that we're supposed to share with this, so I'll have to make them copies of this. I'm not sure really what it is. This is real small writing. This, oh, resolution is supportive, okay, I see. So, we'll make copies and we'll make sure everybody gets it. I'm not sure I mentioned in the beginning, but when we have the members of the public speak, we listen to them and we take any information, but we are not allowed by the law to speak back and to engage in a conversation because it's not on our agenda and other people, if they knew it was on the agenda, might want to come. So, that's the law we have to follow. So, it's not that we're not interested, that's just what we have to do, okay? So, thank you for coming. Okay, so, go on to the next item, which is general functions, consent agenda. Do we have a motion for that?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor? We have a resolution, sorry. Roll call.
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, so now, D, adoption of 2017-20 local control accountability plan?
Yeah, so first of all, Ms. McCulley would like me to apologize for her not being here. She is at a multiple-day meeting in Sacramento and she needed to be there by tomorrow at 8:00 a.m. Seeing as the agenda was light, I gave her the permission to leave and get there before traffic. But the LCAP, you have received various reports on it over the last several weeks and perhaps even the whole year. Recently, the county gave us a preview review and they made us, asked us to make a couple of adjustments. If you haven't had an opportunity to review the adjustment page, I have here a couple copies for you to look at. They're minor adjustments, mostly having to do with the figures that were given to us by the county early on. They changed them, so they wanted us to put accurate figures and some omissions that were put in there that were not put in that we later adapted the LCAP to include. So, in your board packet, there is a May 27th version, a May 31st version, and a June 27th version. So, we asked that we approve the June 27th version, final version of the LCAP.
And this summarizes the changes? Because all I seemed to be able to get it to download was the May 31st version.
Yeah, those are the changes. Yeah, those seven, seven minor changes. One of them was a mistake, I think when it was said 220 and we needed it to be 120. We changed it in other parts of the LCAP but forgot to change it in another page.
So, we're doing okay?
All right.
So, has everybody had a chance to look at that? Okay, so can we have a motion on this then?
I would like to make a motion that we adopt the 2017-20, what?
It is a three-year plan.
Okay, that's right, yes. The 2017 to 2018 local control accountability plan. Sorry, I'm a little slow today.
You second it?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it passed. E, adoption of fiscal year 2017-18 proposed budget for active district funds.
So, again, this was a budget that was presented at the last meeting and we held hearing on it. It supports the LCAP, so all the activities in the LCAP are in our budget. And just, there is one page that the county is asking our school board president to sign that the Board is aware that the budget does include some reductions in expenses in out years or in the coming years. And we will know for sure, have a closer idea of what those reductions might be in September after our audited actuals. And we know what, we expect to have some funds that were not utilized this year that will reduce those amounts in the out year, so we'll work through that at the beginning of September.
Okay, so, any questions? If not, can we have a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2017-2018 proposed budget for active district funds.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It passed. Okay, CSBA Annual Conference Discussion, Action?
Yeah, so every year, the Board decides who would like to, who the Board would like to send to the CSBA Annual Education Conference. This year, it is in San Diego. It is a Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, Saturday, if you want to stay for that morning. And, yeah, so the Board can send, we have enough money to send each of you to afford that. There's also options of a ticketed meal event or coming, attending a Wednesday session that usually starts around 9:00, 9:30, so we're able to catch the first flight out on Wednesday morning and get there right after they finish eating their snacks.
Run like crazy. Okay, so since it says action, is anybody committing to going to that now?
Yeah, I would like to go.
I'm also interested.
Me too.
I don't think I'm going to make a commitment at this time for that.
Okay, well, I'm interested in going, so there'll be at least four of us, so if that's signing up saves us a few bucks, maybe we can eat. No, just kidding.
You know, there's quite a bit of a food budget. I don't think we ever meet that.
No, you know, we don't. Bernie, you're really good at showing us where to go.
Especially when we go to San Diego, we can spend some time at the Ralph's and pick up some food to eat.
Yes.
To have for breakfast.
He tells us not too much now. Just kidding. No, we have never done, you know, we don't waste our money on food that's expensive. Rubber chicken.
So, yeah, so we'll go ahead and make reservations for four of you. We can always make a final reservation closer to the event. Dr. Douglas, if you should decide you wanted to attend or if you know for sure you don't, let us know.
Right.
And then for the extra session on Wednesday, there is a board president session, there is experienced board members, and none of you are brand-new board members, so you wouldn't go to that one. So, if you would like to attend that, let Ms. Kovarai know so that we can make reservations for that and then also ensure that you get a flight that gets you there in time for that.
And the date is November 30th?
Wednesday the 30th, yes.
That's the Wednesday one, huh? Okay.
Mr. Koo will be attending as a delegate, right? So, he will fly in the day before us.
For the ticketed meal function, do we need to decide now or do we decide later?
You can decide later. Those usually don't sell out, but probably not two or three weeks before, maybe a month before if you'd like to attend that.
Also, November 30th is a Thursday.
Oh, that's not the Wednesday.
Yeah.
In the Wednesday is the.
Oh, Wednesday is the first, correct, yes. Wednesday is the date of the pre-conference special. And then, so it would be December 1st if you're not attending the pre-conference special.
No, no, I think you just said.
Oh, sorry. I'm confused.
November 30th is a Thursday and then the 2nd is Saturday.
Yeah, November 29th, okay, so we would leave on the 29th for all, under all circumstances. Because it's nice to register on the afternoon of the 29th if you have the opportunity, even if you're not going to the pre-conference, rather than waiting for an hour and a half the first day of the conference, so.
Right. I don't want to do that.
What were you waiting for, you said?
No, if we wait, if we arrive on the morning of the 30th, we would need to wait in long lines to receive registration materials, so we will, in all circumstances, arrive on the 29th.
Okay, the 29th of December 2nd, okay, that's great. Okay, so it says action, should we take a vote on this?
Sure, why don't you take an action to send four board members and with the option for Dr. Douglas to decide at a later point, if that's what she likes.
I'll second that motion. Oh, I'm sorry. You can't make a motion.
I move that we approve four board members going to the CSBA Annual Education Conference November 30th through December 2nd and with an option to add one more just in case.
Did you want to say, we just said it was going to be the 29th? I mean, the day before, right?
Well, the conference is, yeah, 29th through 2nd.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. So, now we'll go to, start items. We're going real fast now. Okay, we're down to item 10, certificated personnel. So, it's the retirements.
Yeah, we have a couple of folks that made a decision at the beginning of June, so Ms. Susan Korenich, who's a longtime kindergarten teacher from M.H. Tobias, and Ms. Colleen Dugan, fourth-grade teacher over at Garden Village School. They're going to begin their retirement effective June 10th, and we want to thank them for their many years of service to the district. And the administration is recommending that the Board approve their request.
We have a motion?
I will make a motion that we approve the retirement request from Susan Korenich and Colleen Dugan effective June 10th, 2017, and that appropriate resolutions be prepared commending them for their years of service with the district.
Second.
We need a vote on that, yes.
Have a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
And there's a one. Did you want to say, we just said it was going to be the twenty-ninth, I mean, the, the day before, right?
Well, the conference is, yeah, twenty-ninth through second.
Yeah, yeah.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, so now we'll go to, uh, start items. We're going real fast now. Okay, we're down to item ten, certificated personnel, so it's the retirements.
Yeah, we have a couple of folks that made a decision at the beginning of June. So, Ms. Susan Korenich, who's a longtime kindergarten teacher from M.H. Tobias, and Ms. Colleen Dugan, fourth-grade teacher over at Garden Village School. They're going to begin their retirement effective June tenth. And we want to thank them for their many years of service to the district. And the administration is recommending that the Board approve their request.
Have a motion?
I will make a motion that we approve the retirement request from Susan Korenich and Colleen Dugan effective June tenth, two thousand seventeen, and that appropriate resolutions be prepared commending them for their years of service with the district.
Second.
We need a vote on that, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
And there's one opposed, so pass.
Well, you know, I was a little reluctant to let some of these people retire, but.
I was told to go fast.
Your job.
You, you greeted me outside and said, that's.
We have an opportunity to make this one of our fastest board meetings, so.
I see it, it's happening, it's happening.
Number twelve, okay, no talking, number twelve. Okay, number twelve is Board Policies. And we, this is the second reading, so has anyone found anything in addition to what we talked about last time? We're going to work on some.
Yeah, I did. So, it is Board Policy sixty-one forty-four. It would be on subsection A. We worked on that language. Ms. McCulick and I worked on some language that we felt comfortable with. I think it got us away from "all" and, and we included the word "multiple." We also included a phrase saying that when it's not in the Board-adopted curriculum, that this is when the process is entered into. And we also included a qualifier that the material be considered appropriate, so.
I thought you guys did a great job of, of taking care of the problem that was bothering me, so.
Yeah, and so we thought of multiple circumstances when this could be applied. And I think we tried to seek wording that would help guide instruction, teachers and administrators at school sites know how to approach this.
And probably you'll discuss it at other times with them, so they'll, they'll understand that too. Okay, sounds great. So, is there anything else that we want to talk about for the Board Policies? If not, let's, let's have a vote, or let's have a motion.
I didn't have any other issues, so I'll make a motion that we approve the March twenty-seventeen Board Policy Revisions for the second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, down to thirteen, Board Member Comments, Reports and Reflection on Board Meeting Guidelines. Quickly, who's first?
Somebody start.
I'll go then. We, I'll, I kept my focus on the best interests of our students and looking forward to another school year coming up. And I guess that's enough.
I chose, at the end of each meeting, we will reflect on how well we followed our meeting guidelines and addressed our goals.
And?
And that pretty much.
I selected, we will work toward the future, learning from the past. We approved a now cap and a budget that kind of helps our students for the years, so I thought that worked pretty well.
Well, I have to admit, I was in the car all day and I didn't get past the word focus because squirrel. But, you know, I, keeping, I was like, keeping our focus on the best interests of our students and we're doing our best.
Okay, well, I picked several of them, but then I decided to stick to this one. We will strive to support our district message showing up by arriving, starting, ending on time. And if I see it correctly, as soon as I get done talking, I, I'm going to ask to adjourn the meeting in, in memory of Wayne Johnson. And, and it'll be, let's take a moment, silence first. Therefore, we will now close the meeting at seven thirty-five. Did I beat everybody? No. Do I, do I get the, I get a red badge?